The circus?
Yes.
Oh, that was-
This is the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners's Equalization Meeting. If you have a cellphone, please put on vibrate or silent. Just a quick note, we are not televising live, however, we are video recording and web streaming. First item is the pledge, if you could stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call attendance, please.
Mr. Gilman.
Here.
Enchle.
Here.
Lemko.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Thomas.
Yep.
Maxbauer.
Here.
Fleece. Willock.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Inman.
Here. Let's show Commissioner Fleece, excuse, he did call in. He had a personal situation he had to take care of, so he couldn't come in. And the next item is a public comment. Does any member of the public wish to speak at this time? Hearing done, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to the equalization report. Lori, you have the floor.
Today is statutory equalization in Michigan, all over the state. County equalization needs to be completed and the official L-4024 needs to be submitted with the state by May 2nd. State equalization will take place on May 23rd. Again, this equalization report has been prepared by the Equalization Department, which serves as staff to the County Board of Commissioner in performing your statutory function. Our role is to assist you in equalizing the assessed value in Grand Travers County. If you read the language of the law, it says we do this by adding to or deducting from the assessed value of each class of property in all 14 jurisdictions in the county, to bring them to a common level of valuation, which in Michigan is 50 percent of true cash value. The first page in the report is simply an overview of what we're reporting to the board. The second page is the resolution for the board to adopt the equalization report. The third page is the staff and the Equalization Department involved in this report and who they report to. The fourth page indicates the supervisors, assessors, presidents, and managers of the local units. The fifth page is required to be submitted by myself. It indicates the level of certification that Grand Travers County is required to have in an assessor and the certification level that I hold, which is a Level 4. And it also gives my recommended county equalized values. The equalization process, as you know, is to fulfill the directives of the Michigan Constitution regarding the requirements of uniformity of assessments and a system of equalization of those assessments. Every year, our department submits studies to the state. This is required to be submitted by December 31st. Once this is done, the various townships then go to work. The first step in the process is the local assessor and board of review. The second step is today, which is county equalization. The final step is state equalization. I got ahead of myself, sorry. I forgot to switch the- Every year, in the Equalization Department, we receive a report that's called the Board of Review Action Report. I look at this report carefully for a lot of reasons. One reason is we want to avoid costly appeals, and you can see by the report today, or you will by the time I'm through, how costly those appeals are to us here in Grand Travers Our appeals have gone up dramatically and the decisions have reduced our values dramatically. One of the things that I did compile, and I compile the reports every year, is that we had 1,069 appeals this year to March Board of Review. Of those appeals, 550 were granted. Now, these appeals are simply for a residential class. There's no requirement for commercial and industrial to go to March Board of Review, so I can't give you those numbers. We will be seeing those later, but again, we're going to have another round probably of Michigan Tax Tribunal Appeals. This graph shows what happened at various township boards of review after the assessors turned the roles over. The two units with the most change at Board of Review were Garfield Township and Acme Township, as you can see by the numbers. Lori?
Why such a huge difference between, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, between Garfield and the other townships?
I compiled this after the assess- What's that?
Great Wolf Lodge, probably.
Well, this took place after the assessor turned the role over, so there's, I don't know, you know, just like we had some condominium appeals that you mentioned earlier in East Bay Township, something came to Board of Review, something, a lot of somethings came to Board of Review, in which the Board of Review decided to change the value of the assessor, and I haven't had a chance to ask the assessor exactly what that was.
Would you, and let us know?
Yes.
Thank you.
This report is one I put out on the web. It compares our 2010 numbers to our 2011 numbers. The first column compares the parcel count from 2010 to 2011, showing a .74 percent increase overall. Union Township had the largest increase by parcel count at 3.48 percent. Green Lake had the largest decrease at a minus .25 percent. The middle section of this report shows the change in county equalized value from 2010 to 2011. The overall percent of change was a minus 6.18 percent. Grant Township had the largest decrease at 19.29 percent. And the smallest decrease was in Traverse City at .47 percent. The county equalized value for 2011 is $5,244,751,933. The last section is the important section, that's our taxable value from 2010 to 2011. The total decrease in taxable was a minus 2.13 percent. The inflation rate this year was 1.7 percent. So that's a positive CPI with a negative taxable, and the biggest reason for that is when you have Michigan tax tribunal decisions, they become last year's base for this year's value, if that's making sense to anybody. And we had some huge tax tribunal decisions, which is one of the reasons that I feel it's really imperative for this county board and any taxing authority to become much more involved in tax tribunal cases that we have, because it does, whether you think it does or not, you're going to pay one way or another. And I think this is reflecting that. The total taxable value for the county is $4,298,414,062, I'm sorry. Garfield Township had the largest decrease at minus 12.15 percent. We had two units with an increase in taxable value this year. Whitewater Township had a .68 percent increase, and Traverse City had a 1.49 percent increase.
Lori, you just said Garfield Township had the largest decrease at 12.15 percent. That was Green, or Grant, I mean?
Garfield.
In taxable value, I'm talking about now.
No, it's Grant, actually.
It's Grant.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Did I say, I misspoke. I'm sorry. This graph shows the county equalized value from 2002 to 2011. If you look at the graph, and I think this is important to note as well, look at where we are now compared to 2005 and 2006. We're between the two numbers, so that's how far our values have dropped within two Last year, I reported that we had been told that our residential class had bottomed out. I'm still not seeing that. So I think next year, again, is where we're going to really see if that's the case. I'm not seeing it yet. And when you look at the residential class for Grand Travers County, it's 76.28 percent of our total value. So it's something that we need to look at closely. The next graph shows the total real property assessed percent of the real class total. Again, this is where I was indicating that the residential class is 76.28 percent of the real total. This graph indicates the percentage of parcel count to the whole. Traverse City has the largest parcel count at 15.7 percent, followed by East Bay Township at 15.1 percent, and then Garfield Township at 14.9 percent. The next graph shows the percentage of assessed value to the whole by unit. Traverse City has 18.2 percent of the total assessed value, followed by Garfield Township at 17.9 percent. If you look at your report last year, these two units have flipped. The next graph shows the percentage of taxable value to the whole by unit. Here, Garfield Township has the highest percentage at 19.3 percent, followed by the City of Traverse City at 18 percent, Peninsula Township at 13 percent, and East Bay at 11.3 percent. The next graph shows the 2011 comparison of county equalized value and taxable value by class. As these two bars get closer together, a drop in assessment becomes a drop in taxable, and they're getting closer together. So this is a must-watch for budgets.
Lori, just a quick question. On the page before that, over the last couple of years, hasn't Garfield been bigger than the city?
That's what I was indicating, we've flipped this year.
Yeah, so it's a, okay.
As a direct result of the tribunal?
Okay.
Great Wolf Lodge and some-
Among a lot of them.
Yeah, a lot of them, you're right. You know, what's interesting there on that last one, Lori, is, you know, we keep focusing in on appeals because it's a big number, but really, if you take the reduction in agricultural, commercial, and industrial value, it's less than half of the reduction in residential value. Residential value went down about $236 million, and all the others together went down $102 million. So, you know, we keep talking about, you know, the tax tribunal-
The residential class is by far our biggest class.
Yeah, it's our biggest class, and that's where we're getting hit hardest in terms of total loss.
I don't know whether I want to theorize, but I have a theory for part of our problem there, too, but I don't know.
Oh, I'd like to hear it.
I'll get to it, because I do have a slide that I think I can kind of show you where I think there's a problem. In fact, it's coming up shortly here.
Okay.
This graph compares the difference between our county equalized value and our taxable value between the various units, so you can kind of see where the various units are as far as whether we have a gap at all. And one of the biggest questions that my office received this year, and maybe you did as commissioners, is the instances where we had a drop in assessment and an increase in taxable value, wherever you had that gap, you were seeing that very, very difficult to explain.
Good question.
This is the slide I kind of wanted to show and talk about. This graph shows the share of sales. The assessors were required to use a one-year timeframe this year, again, because of the market, trying to get it closer to market. And this was the timeframe, so if you look at the share of sales that occurred during this timeframe in various units, East Bay led in forec-, or in share of sales. I bring up this slide because I think foreclosures and subsequent sales by banks is important to our value. Guidelines have been issued. I sometimes don't feel those guidelines are used. All sales that are used in any study, whether we're developing land values or ECFs, are supposed to be arms-length transactions. Questions need to be answered according to the guidelines, and I'm not really sure that they are in many cases. A determination as to whether the type of sale being reviewed is a measurable portion of the market, in other words, are these transactions that we have here, a measurable portion of the sales that we have, needs to be answered, whether you're using them at all. They have to be a measurable portion of the market to be used. A determination that the sales property was properly exposed in the market also has to be asked. For example, was it listed with a real estate company? A physical inspection of the property must be made to determine that the assessment reflects the condition of the property at the time of sale. Have any of you ever walked through a foreclosure?
I have.
What have you seen sometimes?
No appliances.
They're stripped.
Stripped.
They're stripped.
And so, we're not supposed to be using those, and I'm not so sure that that's always the case. A determination that the parties to the transaction were not related and each was acting in their own best interest, was a market value appraisal obtained before a listing. And I'm saying this because if you have a bank, what is their concern? If they're selling it? They want to get their mortgages. That really, they just want to make, get their money out. Does that mean that that's really a market appraisal? They have one concern, and that's getting their money back out.
In most cases, they don't get their money back. They get part of it.
Well, I'm just saying that these are some of the questions we're supposed to be asking. Did the seller have the right to refuse all offers? Was the property marketed for an adequate period of time? And a big one was, were sales conditions affected by the financial institution's requirement to dispose of the foreclosed property within one year to avoid the uncapping of taxable value, or because of banking regulations, conditions requiring special treatment of property owners owned by the institution? One of the things that we're seeing at boards of review are appraisals. Typically, those appraisals have two foreclosures on them, and the boards are asked to reduce properties based on those foreclosures. My question is, have those questions been asked in those appraisals? Are they really arms-length transactions, and are they reflecting the requirements that we're required to operate under? So that's my soapbox for the day, is I think those are really, a lot of people that, in the current economy, that can hold on to their property are because they know what the conditions are. So some of what we're seeing are heavily influencing the market values in our county. I'm not so sure it's an adequate reflection. The other thing that I think you, as a board, need to be aware of, and probably already are, we had a recent Supreme Court decision, Cluster, Nathan Cluster versus the City of Charlevoy. This case involves the General Property Tax Act and circumstances in which a conveyance of property may not permit uncapping and reassessing of the property. And our orders are that we're supposed to look at this and go back to Proposal A, which is in 1994. Obviously, for Grand Travers County, this also has a financial implication. I don't know what that financial implication is, and frankly, we've never tracked joint tenancy. We don't have the capability within our programs. I don't, to me, is extremely, to order assessors to do that, and we received this at Board of Review time. It was a monumental task, and frankly, one that I think is way too difficult for us to accomplish. I think it involves title work. I'm sure people will be coming forward. I don't know what the ramifications are for the county, but I'm sure there will be some, unless we see a legislative change. I think you're going to see some revenue implications from this case. The other thing that I wanted to briefly touch on is we are in the middle of our personal property discovery program. To date, 2,402 letters have been mailed to business owners. And again, personal property are those tangible assets of a business owner. Personal property is required to be filed February 20th of every year. The law requires an assessor, if those statements are not filed to, file an estimate on them. So I did want to report where we are there. We're not quite where I'd like to be at this stage, but we're getting our first list in shortly, so I can better report to you what we've found so far, probably at your next meeting, if you'd like that. The thing that I wanted to also mention regarding when we're on the personal property topic is, as you, as commissioners are probably aware, there's a lot of discussion about doing away with personal property tax. One of the things that I want to caution this board is be careful what you wish for, because one of the things that I also feel very strongly about is, I believe in the personal property tax and the fact that it's local. Any other tax that is not of our tax, local tax, is going to go down to Lansing, which they're going to control our funding locally. You talk about the income tax, you talk about sales tax, any of those other types of taxes, I think it's a dangerous road to go down. But then another aspect is, a few years ago, the equalization directors took a stance on our millage reduction fractions, and that what used to calculate into our millage reduction fractions was personal property depreciation, which we felt was not appropriate and shouldn't be in those calculations, and we were successful in that argument. So personal property now is keeping your millage reduction fractions at one. If we make any recovery at all, and you remove personal property, you're guaranteed millage reduction fraction. So I'm just issuing a warning for those that would love to see personal property go away, that there's going to be some ramifications from budget standpoint.
All right. If personal property tax goes away, what about utilities? Is all that going to go on real property?
There's, I've seen all kinds of proposals. One of them is to do away with the commercial personal and the industrial personal, but keep the utility personal, so, you know, and I've been, I've been in this business 33 years, and I've heard it every year, so I don't know, I don't know where it'll go.
How, you know, that would be a tough thing on utilities. It would be tough for you to follow, because most of their personal property is on other people's land.
Another tough thing is, you have units of government that over 50 percent of their revenue is personal property. You take that away from them, all of a sudden, services like fire department, police, roads become all that much more difficult, which is part of the reason personal property has never gone away, is they can never figure out how to replace the revenue.
Where are you hearing this from?
Pardon me?
Are you just assuming our personal opinion, or are you hearing something other than going on?
I, well, obviously, the Michigan Township Association, I talked to Larry Merrill.
Yeah.
Our lobbyist for the MAD. It's, a lot of it's rumored in-
Is it just flowing out, there's no bills, or?
Well, there are bills, yes.
There are bills?
Well, there are proposed bills.
The Michigan fair tax, for example, would do away with personal property tax, and is a part of its package to replace that and the state income tax as well.
With a, with a-
With a higher sales tax.
With a higher sales tax.
Now, it also has components in it to adjust for that, I would assume, but it's still, you know, she, you know.
I'm just saying that at that point in time, it's not controlled locally.
Commissioner Willock.
Well, I think, you know, I'm not sure today is the time, but I think a discussion has to be taken about this, these phone calls, businesses, and anybody who's registered as a DVA are getting in regard to personal property tax. You know, from my understanding, half the time, the person on the other end of the phone can't even speak English to where they can understand what they're asking. And, you know, I've gotten multiple calls from various accountants that I know about this is the worst time of the year, as they're trying to finish up business, income tax, and all that kind of stuff, to be expecting us to do an audit for someone who's never prepared a personal tax audit for their business before.
I would just point out, though, that February 20th is the filing deadline.
I understand that, but, you know, we're talking about people that have never, some of these folks have never filed, and whether or not they ever should still remains a question in my mind, so. But I don't believe that was part of today's agenda, so it should be a discussion for another time.
Commissioner Maxbauer.
Well, I just wanted to say that I have also received phone calls, and I have spoken with Lori Spencer, and she is handling it extremely well. So, but again, that's a discussion for another time.
All right. Okay.
There's another item that I'd like to bring to this board's attention that I feel has the potential to be a problem, and that is our TIF districts. If you think of how a TIF district operates in captured value, and I, I'm just using a simple example, you have a property worth $100,000 with a $20,000 capture value. When the county settles with the township, that $20,000 capture value is paid out to the TIF district. Now, assume that same parcel is under appeal at the Michigan Tax Tribunal, and a year or so later, we receive an order to repay that $20,000 because they've reduced it by that amount. The county is ordered to pay that back, or the various taxing authorities, they never had that money to begin with.
Right, that's exactly right.
They're paying, they're paying twice for a TIF district. And so, I believe, and we haven't had, I don't think, although, again, we don't track it as well as I think we should, we haven't had, I don't think, major implications from that, but the potential, you think of a Great Wolf Lodge, or some, something, and the reason I bring this up is this has happened in a unit, where they had a major appeal in a TIF district, that they're paying back major money.
Mm-hmm.
I just think it's something that you need to be aware of and think of. I don't even know the legalities of going back and collecting back from the TIF districts, but I think it's something that needs to be thought about, because otherwise, various taxing authorities are paying twice.
So a decision on establishing a TIF district could, it could be worse than what you thought you were making the decision on later on? I mean-
Well, all I'm saying is, I think they, if there is a tax decision on a parcel in a TIF district, I think they should be paying back just like you are. Do you know where I'm going with that? They get the money, it's paid out, it's gone, and then all of a sudden, you paid it out, but all of a sudden, you're ordered to pay back.
Pay back, just, okay.
I don't know what the ramifications are for the county, but I think it's something that we have to think about.
If we have to pay back, Lori, $20,000 in that instance, who pays the TIF's share?
You do.
The county?
Oh, yeah.
The city that the TIF is in?
Well, any of the, any of the authorities.
That's what I was asking.
Commission on Aging is, you know-
My question is, it gets prorated among everyone.
Except for the TIF district.
Except for the TIF district, okay. We don't charge the city that it's in for the TIF's part of it, do we?
To my knowledge, we've never billed back a TIF district.
Oh, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
If there's $10,000 that has to be paid back, and we each have a percentage of that, the city has a, and the TIF district's in the city, the city has a percentage of it they have to pay back. Does that, do they pay it, the TIF's portion, or does everybody pay a prorated piece of whatever the TIF got? That's my question.
You all pay your prorated piece because you're, you're ordered to pay back that dollar amount, so whatever that dollar amount is calculated, it's your millage.
It just gets credited across, yeah. Lori brought this to my attention a couple of weeks ago, and Bill Rokus got back-
Dennis, can you, I'm having-
Lori brought this to my attention a couple of weeks ago, and Bill Rokus and I have talked about this, and we're having John Ax look, look at this, too, to see what our options are in that regard.
Well, I think we've got to-
But I agree with Lori, there's no reason that the TIF district shouldn't be responsible to pay back with everybody else.
I think we better take a look at talking with Howard Walker and Wayne Schmidt about putting a-
Well, I think first, first we better decide, we better determine whether legally we're doing it correctly or not.
Right. And the second part is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if they're in a TIF and they're getting, they're getting relief from taxes, they shouldn't be able to make an appeal.
And I think we should- And I think we should.
Well, there's no relief from taxes.
Well, there's no relief, they pay the 100% tax, it's just part of it gets captured by the DDA.
Well, I think what he's referring to, though, is when you develop your projections for a TIF district, and some of them is based on their value, and yet, then, and so you projected out.
Right.
So many years, and then, the persons within that district are appealing, and lowering that value that you've projected out.
Well, that's exactly right.
So, that's wrong, too, because, you know, obviously, that projection isn't right. I agree that that's a problem, but.
Well, there's a solution.
I don't know what you can do about the problem, but.
Well, let us get an analysis of the legality of what we're doing, and whether there's some options that we're just not following through with. And if not, then you can put together a list of things that you want to propose when we have our joint meeting with.
We've got to work on that.
Schmidt and Walker.
Yeah, Commissioner Richardson.
But have we had any tax tribunal decisions on property and TIF districts here?
Absolutely. I don't know how many, or what the impact was, but I can almost guarantee you that you would have had some. Because if you think about in the city, you have two, there are two big TIF districts.
Right.
We have a TIF district in Green Lake, we have one in, you know, I mean, you just think of where they are, in the county, our brownfields.
Is it possible to come up with a list of those for us?
That's what I'm saying, is I'm also need, when I get our tribunal database set up, I've got to add a field, and one of those fields has to be, when we get those tribunals, is that in a TIF district? And then, we can actually generate some numbers. I need to add another field, because when this was brought to me, I feel it's important.
Could we conditional, conditionalize those TIF districts when we make those decisions whether or not to create it? I mean?
I don't know.
Not without changing state law.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting to.
Yeah.
All right. The next four pages are the equalization report, and in that, you could see the units by class and the percent of the county total, I think, towards the back. And the last, oh, there was a report in here, though, that I thought was interesting, and that is, the statistics, you might want to take a look at that. For instance, in 2011, we had 21,305 parcels where our taxable value equaled our assessed value. These are the parcels that if the assessed goes down, so does the taxable. Our gap between taxable and SEV is 18.96%. We had 8,409 parcels with an increase in assessed value at Board of Review, and we had 36,919 with a decrease in assessed value. But if you look at taxable value, we had 30,454 parcels increase in value and 17,323 decrease in taxable. So, it is sort of an interesting statistics, if you look at those. Statistics, again, on cappings, and those might change based on that court decision, and the ranges on some of our parcels, the gap between assessed and taxable. As I indicated, then, we have the equalization report, and the last few pages are the official L-4024, which needs to be signed by the Board Chairman, as well as the county clerk and myself, and mailed to the state by May 2nd. Are there any other questions regarding the equalization report?
Just make a comment. For my personal preference, I prefer to have stuff digitally, and I know I hound Dennis enough about that. And also, I'd like to have had it before this meeting.
Well, I worked until 7:00 last night to balance.
Okay, well, I certainly. I don't want to diminish the work.
So, if I could do it, I would.
Will this be available digitally?
Yes, it will be. In fact, I always put it online as well.
Good.
It will be available digitally. It's, we do not, for the complexity that we have, we don't have enough time in equalization between close of March Board of Review, getting the databases from the unit, and equalizing. I barely have time to breathe, let alone.
Are there things?
So, I apologize, I understand that, but I just, I worked, if you came in here Saturday and Sunday, I was here.
Are there things that we can, because we're going to be meeting with our representatives pretty soon here, in fact, we're just figuring out a date at this time. Are there things that we can do to try to move state law so that it can help?
We need more time between close of March Board of Review and equalization. Today, I would have liked to have been able to study our databases more to determine exactly, I mean, I know tribunals played a big role, but why did we have a positive CPI and a negative taxable? Those are the things that I need to understand, and you need to understand, so that we know next year. I didn't, I had all I could do to balance and get things, numbers in, didn't have time. I think it deserves a lot more analysis than I was able to do by finishing this up late last night.
Okay. Commissioner Mansflower.
Lori, this is, you know, with your time constraints and the amount of staff you have, this is an outstanding job, as far as I'm concerned. And again, I have not had a time, had enough time to, obviously, since it was placed on our desk today, to really look at this. What I would like from you is, as Commissioner Gilman stated, some items that we can bring to our state reps, senators, to make this easier for you and make it easier for the county.
Well, you know, I don't know how you feel about the Cluster case, but that has the implication of never having an uncapping again. And some of what we depend on, besides new construction, which we haven't seen lately, is, are uncappings. And so, if you don't have, you're looking at budgets that are just going to continue to erode. And at some point in time, other than handing out exemptions one after another, I think our representatives have to start thinking about how we're going to fund services.
Absolutely, but I'm also concerned with, I don't want, you know, staff working 12-hour days either. And so, I want to hear that as a commissioner.
It's way too complicated, complex when you're dealing with uncappings, we're dealing with all of these various issues. Now, we've received an order to go back to '94. It's physically impossible.
An order to go back to '94?
On these joint, the uncappings that have been done on joint tenancies.
You're supposed to review these back to 1994?
That's our order.
Yeah.
It's impossible, but, I mean, I'm just telling you the truth.
That was a legislative decision, or a court decision?
That was a state tax commission order.
Does that have potential of breaching into the pockets, or?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, big time.
It's a payback to '94. If you had whatever you had in that, and I wish I could tell you today, how many did we have? I can't, you know, that's the problem with it. We never tracked, and we never needed to.
So, it's going to be up to people to actually show up and say, hey?
I personally, I think that's where, we already, the first day that decision was handed out, we already had calls. So, those people are, you know, some of them that are aware of it are certainly calling. I don't know the extent.
Commissioner Mansflower.
Dean, have you been working with Lori to determine what impact this has on our budget?
I have had discussions with Lori, because I need the taxable value to calculate tax revenue.
One of the things that Dean asked me to do today, and like I say, because of the problem I had, was, not only, what he needs is, we need to know all of the TIF districts, the brownfields, the Renaissance zone values, all of those values, and I have to give them to him, and I promise, because I didn't get it today, that I will get it shortly, but I couldn't accomplish it. But, you know, that's what he needs, really, to be able to.
We have not been able to calculate that, but I know the hours that Lori has put in. You know, the primary concern was to have this report to you to meet the statutory requirement. We are going to try to have something at ways and means, not try, we will, in terms of what the impact will be on the tax revenue. You know, I let Lori finish what she needed to do, and over the course of the next few days, we'll rough up a tax calculation based on this taxable value.
Dean and I have been through roughly the 25 revenue line items, and have most, all of them settled, with the exception of this one. And so, next week, once we get this one in, we're going to present you a two-year revenue projection for next two years' budgets. Commissioner Lemko.
I make a motion to adopt the 2011 equalization report.
Support. All right, moved by Commissioner Lemko, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
Thank you.
Does that require a roll call vote?
Yes, it does.
It does, okay. We will do a roll call vote.
All right.
Commissioner Hatchell? Lemko?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas? Max Power?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Gilman?
Yes.
Chairman Edman?
Yes.
Before we close, just clarification on, so are you telling me, are you telling the board that the Michigan Tax Tribunal has the authority to do an order like this?
State Tax Commission.
The State Commission has the authority to do this without going through a legislative process?
I.
That's hard to believe.
Well, we take our guidance from them by statute, but I agree with you, there's something.
I mean, I question if they have the authority to do that.
If you would ask that question for me, because, like I say, that's a monumental task to lay on.
Well, that's just another question for Howard and Wayne. That doesn't seem right to me. I mean, it seems to me you would have to have legislation in place to allow them to do that.
I don't think sometimes people realize, when they say assessors should go back to '94, what are you, do you realize the monumental amount of work? I mean, maybe they don't, I don't know.
Could you request an opinion whether or not it should, the burden of responsibility should fall on those people who might be making that claim? At least that would limit, I mean, what you're looking at.
I can tell you, in reality, that's probably what is going to happen, just because of the.
The sheer volume of what you'd have to do otherwise.
All right. It might be useful to write up a synopsis of this, so that we could give it to our legislators. Perhaps they could ask for an Attorney General's opinion. Right, that would be good.
Yeah.
All right. All right, is there anything else regarding the equalization report? Hearing none, we have a second public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, we will bring it back to the board for adjournment. We have a motion by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Richardson.
Lori, I will give this report to Garfield Township.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.
Do you have a spare?